When we last left off, I think we were on Bill 57. I'm going to go ahead and recognize Speaker Judith Wampat.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, the first thing that I'd like to do after an extensive discussion with members is that I want to motion to withdraw the as amended version that we were discussing the day pre yesterday. So that's my first motion.
On that motion, are there any objections? No objections? Motion carries.
Thank you again. Now, my second motion then is to accept another version which is as substituted by the author on the floor, and everyone should have a copy of that.
Everybody has a copy on their desk. If not, you can see the sergeant-at-arms. Are there any objections to placing the Bill Number 5732 as, see or as substituted by the author on the floor? No objections?
And the motion is to accept.
And you'll still speak on the substitution?
That's to accept first.
Right?
Yes, and then...
Right. If there are no objections, motion carries. Please proceed, Speaker.
My last motion then is now to place the Bill 57-32 as substituted by the author on the floor, and I'd like to just briefly explain now this new version.
Without objection, go ahead and speak, Speaker Wampat.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. What you will notice in this new bill, of course, is that, first of all, I know the title is a little bit longer than the first one because where I've actually pulled out several sections that is part of this bill. So the very first thing we're doing in Section 1, so no more legislative findings, I'm following suit from Speaker Pangolino, so all that means me to remove the intent. But we're doing it, and what it is is that in Section 53108 is the removal by the department, and what this is, is in the original law currently for 48 years, is that the sum of $10 then has increased here, and these are defined currently by law, and these items are, now read to you what the law says, and it's a definition by law, that these particular encroachments are tower, pole, pole line, pipe, pipeline, fence, billboard, stand or building, or any other structure, or utility infrastructure, not particularly mentioned, which is placed in, under, or over any portion of the highway. That's the original law, so I've not changed that at all, but that is the definition in which this $50 fine then would be applicable. And all that fine, the fines for those, then will go, be deposited into a new fund that we're trying to create, which is the Public Rights of Way Fund, and that then will be returned to the next page, is that fund is created, oh, no, yeah, you're right, that will be on Section 3, which creates the fund. Section 2 is also, again, same language in the law, which enforcement of WAMs littering and abandoned vehicle laws, and what this would do is that it authorizes now the Department of Public Works to enforce this portion of the law, because currently they don't, now they would be authorized to do just that. Section 4 is a new paragraph, and the new paragraph is to add a new E, and the new E is when, what it does is that it's to establish then now this other fine, which is very specific to the encroachment of abandoned vehicles, because in Section 2, we made reference to that authorizing them to do just that. This fee is not applicable to litters, littering, refuse, and trash that, because they're already currently in a separate definition under this section, but what this is now is $100, $100 for a violation to dispose of the vehicle, and this is every 30 days. So there is no second or third offense, it's only one time, $100, 30 days later, if they still didn't remove it, then there's that other $100 again for another 30 days. So it brings the amount, makes it reasonable, and it really just addresses the concerns of DPW to be able to be authorized then to now enforce that provision for the abandoned vehicle, and lastly is to bring up-to-date, an outdated fine of $10 that's 48 years old, to now from $10 to $50. So, Madam Speaker, I ask my colleagues to please consider supporting Bill Number 57. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Speaker Wampat. Anyone else wishing to speak on the motion as substituted? Speaker Ben.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I certainly rise in support of the changes being made to ensure that, number one, we do have some kind of law and order with regards to encroachments on public rights of ways, and provide a reasonable, in this case, I think, then, fine in order to provide some incentive for those violators to correct the encroachments that they are perpetrating upon the public safety on these public rights of ways. Secondly, of course, the abandoned vehicle fund, I think, once again, I think this is reasonable, and certainly I can support. The problem I, the question I have with regards to the bill, of course, is the creation of this new fund. You know, since now we know that the encroachment is going to be assessed, and we know that we have an existing fund, the Territorial Highway Fund, which is, of course, charged for the maintenance of our highways, which is what this is meant to enforce, to support, and then, of course, the enforcement of them. So I just, you know, creating another special fund places another administrative burden on the Department of Administration. It's one of these other unfunded mandates that the governor would always talk about. And the reason why I'm asked, you know, I'm questioning is, I don't believe that the creation of a brand-new fund is necessary in this case, given what is the authorized uses of the Territorial Highway Fund, and all of the public easements are part of the territorial highway systems. So therefore, I believe that, you know, would prefer, of course, that we don't create a new fund, we just deposit it into the Highway, Territorial Highway Maintenance Fund, and then provide the resources to DPW, because it all goes to them. Territorial Highway Fund is dedicated to use by the Department of Public Works for enforcement and maintenance of our highways, and so would like to ask for the consideration of the author in terms of, you know, considering maybe just depositing it into the Territorial Highway Maintenance Fund rather than creating a brand-new fund. The other thing, of course, I have with regards to this being in the bill is, I'm just not sure that this creation of this new fund is germane to the subject matter contained in Bill 57. So that's another, I guess, question I have, so...
I'm going to pose that as an inquiry, Speaker Pangolino, to the good author of the legislation, if she'd like to answer that on the fund.
Yeah.
Well, you know, originally, Mr. Speaker, is that in the original bill, I did actually said that all fines will be deposited into the Territorial Highway Fund.
Yeah.
They, but then they came back to us and told us that because all of the funds, and that's a large amount of money that comes in there, and it will get lost, and if there's a way in which maybe a sub-account of that, I don't know, it's just that because they say that they'll be, they need the monies, it'll be very difficult for them to pull that out, they'll immediately get to go and be used for greater, bigger projects than this program, and that's the fear, because, yes, that was the first consideration that I had, and maybe we can kind of figure out something then to make sure that, you know how it is, there's this one big account, and then you maybe have a sub-account for this, so that then they'll be able to withdraw, draw that down, to go and hire the equipment that they need to be able to move these, you know, refuse or remove vehicles. They just didn't want it to get lost in that big account. And that was the reason, because I have the same thought as the speaker as well in wanting to just keep it under one major fund.
Speaker Ben, did that answer your question?
No.
Because I asked for a...
Yes.
If you want to do an amendment, I'd ask for a legislative recess, just so that you could work on that amendment, and...
I agree, and I certainly understood the author's, I guess, intentions here, and her desire to ensure that the fund remains available to DPW for the purpose of enforcing the thing, and that, originally, I agree with her in her original thing, it should have just gone into the Territorial Highway Fund. So would the author...
Let me go ahead, we're going to take a recess. This legislature's back in session. There was an inquiry posed by Speaker Pangolino to Speaker Wampat. Are you finished with your questioning, your answer? Okay. Speaker Wampat, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, and yes, I was able to resolve the issue with Speaker Pangolino and legal counsel and other, and the sponsors of this piece of legislation. So what we're going to do on Page 1, where it says that fines collected shall be deposited into, to delete then the Public Rights of Way Fund, and go back again and put the Territorial Highway Fund. So that's the very first thing.
Go ahead and save a tree on that. Any objections to the motion to add in Territorial Highway Fund? Are there any objections? No objections? Motion carries.
Okay. I'm going to go back and forth, because I just want to make sure that what was tied to the fund, which is in Section 3, is then now to delete that section, and then I'm going to replace it with another language. So first to delete, not the whole, the Section 3 will be, will remain, but a whole new language.
So we'll delete from line 7 to 15?
Yes, which is line, well, yeah, 5 to 15, and then I will introduce a new section.
Section 3.
Yes, a new section 3.
On that motion to delete Section 3, are there any objections? Anyone wishing to speak? No objections? Motion carries. Speaker Wampat?
So the language that I want to put in Section 3, and this is, it's in the committee report in the original bill, and I'm going to use the language, and if I may, if I can just read it, it will say now that all fines shall be deposited into the Territorial Highway Fund, and any interest derived shall remain in the fund. The director is authorized to use revenues collected from encroachment fines to purchase equipment and supplies to procure the services of licensed surveyors required by the department to effectively enforce the public's compliance with applicable highway care and maintenance. Then the new language will be, "All fines generated by this act shall be accounted for separately within the Territorial Highway Fund." So rather than having a special fund, there will be like a sub-account that they would maintain under that big account, the Territorial Highway Fund.
Okay. Do the clerks have that?
I'll give them, it's in the original, and I'll give them the language.
Okay. Are there anyone wishing to speak on that amendment? Senator Augen, you're recognized.
Just an inquiry, Madam Speaker, in terms of the process. Now, there would still be this Territorial Highway Fund where all the proceeds would be deposited into that fund, so it would be only for bookkeeping purposes. So it's not going to be a sub-fund account, but it's for bookkeeping purposes that would identify exactly how much has been deposited into the Territorial Highway Fund under the guise of this provision.
Yes.
Okay. So I just wanted for clarity purposes, so it's not necessarily going to be a bank fund, but it would be more or less a bookkeeping component of the Territorial Highway Fund. Thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Okay, thank you. And that last sentence, if I may repeat, that all fines generated by this act shall be accounted for separately within the Territorial Highway Fund.
Okay.
And I'll give that amendment to the clerks, so I hope there's no objection.
Okay. I do have, so that's the amendment on the floor, and you're going to turn the amendment into the clerk, but I'm going to have Senator Adda speak on the amendment.
Well, it's not so much, well, I'm certainly in support of the fact that the fines that are assessed will go into the Territorial Highway Fund, and I understand that we will then create a separate sub-account to be able to, to basically book those fines, those amounts. And I'm just concerned, though, about how responsive this sub-account would be to the Department of Public Works in being able to go out there, because I don't envision that this is going to be, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars like the Territorial Highway Fund, which comes from your fuel taxes and whatnot. And so I guess maybe I would just like to pose the question of, in the case of the sub-account, that DPW would be able to actually go in there and make expenditures against it, as opposed to having to wait to the end of the year, or going through the process of coming down to the legislature to ask for an appropriation, but instead to allow them to, to make expenditures against that, provided that, let's say, within 10 days of expenditure, they must provide a report to the legislature, so that at least we know that these things are being made. And that way, then, the fund can be a lot more responsive to the Department of Public Works, and so I just pose that, I don't have the language right now to make that as an amendment, but it is something that I would like to put out to the body to consider, to see how we can make this fund more responsive to the Department of Public Works. Thank you.
Senator Adda, do you want consideration to come back for the amendment, for a possible amendment, or are you going to talk to the author?
I'll talk to the author, and it, I mean, no sense, we're like all of it, if there's, you know, support.
Okay. Okay. On the amendment, are there anyone else wishing to speak on the amendment? On the Wampat amendment? Are there any objections to the Wampat amendment? No objections? Motion carries. Speaker Wampat, you still have the floor.
Thank you again very much, Madam Speaker. For the, I just want to make sure again, for legal counsel to do, because we spoke about it earlier, but I want to make it clear, at least as part of our records, that when we talk about the, in the code for Section 3606 under abandoned vehicles, removal, and sale, that what we want to make sure that it says, you know, normally like apprehending officers, or, but we want to make sure that it's, the way it is, is any peace officer will be able to do this, or employee authorized by the director of DPW. So that's, no, legal counsel already knows where to put it, the appropriate place on the bill, which is on Section 4, where that talks about Section 3606. So to add, to make sure that when we say who, that we're saying DPW is going to be authorized to do it, but we want to make sure the language is clear, specifically, any peace officer or employee authorized by the director of DPW.
Yes. Speaker, we're going to need to have that amendment in writing to see it, but in the meantime, while you're working on that with legal counsel, I'll have Senator Augen speak on that.
Can we see a clean bill? We've had a number of changes.
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Senator Augen, you're recognized.
I'll make it fairly brief, because I know there's ongoing dialogue on the sideline, but Madam Speaker, I guess my recommendation is, in conjunction with the authority that would be granted to the director of DPW, that that be in black and white, so that he or she would designate exactly who and how many individuals who will be authorized to provide citations for any of the violations of the code that we're discussing.
Senator Augen...
I will urge and encourage the speaker to incorporate that into her amendment. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
Before we even do that, and I am listening to my colleagues as well, let me just say exactly what it is that I'm going to proffer and set this aside, print out a whole new bill again, and I'm sorry, I apologize for trees, and then that way make it clear, and legal counsel will put this language in. But that's the language that we want to put in, to make sure that we say who it is that's going to really be authorized to do this. The other, and the last thing, and I'll tell you this also, is because DPW is not authorized currently, and this must have been an oversight passed legislature... currently, and this must have been an oversight passed legislatures, because under GCA, 10 GCA, Chapter 51 of the Solid Waste Management and Litter Control, under definition, Section 51202, it says, and I'll read it, because it includes everybody except DPW, that these individuals, which is like peace officers and others, apprehending officers, shall mean any designated individual within the Department of Parks and Recs, the Department of Agriculture, the Guam Environmental Protection Agency, Department of Public Health and Social Services, Department, oh, it is there, Department of Public Works. I just read it. Okay, erase. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I was going to include DPW, but they're included, so legal counsel, we don't need to do that. So they're covered by that. So that's the only last one that you asked for. I'll put together a clean bill. Let me go ahead and set it aside then.
Doesn't include the police department?
Well, I'll double check and see. Yes. Guam Police Department, including Cape Volunteers, the AB Wampat International Airport Authority Police, the Port Authority of Guam Police, and the Guam Fire Department's Uniform Personnel.
Okay. We'll go ahead and, we're going to go ahead and take legislative recess, just for one minute.
Session. We'll now go to Bill Number 73. Senator Dennis Rodriguez, you're recognized.
Thank you, and good afternoon, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I move to place Bill 73-32 as substituted by the Committee on Health on the third reading and be allowed to discuss it.
Any objection? You're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, Bill 73-32 as substituted is an act to rename the Department of Mental Health and Substance Abuse to the Guam Behavioral Health and Wellness Center by mending Chapter 86 of Title 10, and to allow for changes to other relevant laws as necessary solely for the consistency with the agency's name change. Mr. Speaker, the issue of changing mental health's name has been a topic discussed for some time now. Throughout the 50 states, the trend is moving towards changing the names of mental health facilities to behavioral health and wellness centers or facilities. And so in an effort to remove that negative stigma of mental health, and so this bill is, you know, people may see it as a, you know, insignificant, you know, and something that we shouldn't even be doing, because it's just so, such a small thing to do. However, Mr. Speaker, for stakeholders and for professionals in the mental health field, it is quite a significant and a big step into the evolution of mental health services. And so, you know, it's also an opportune time, Mr. Speaker, that we know that the mental health was under a federal court order, federal management team for quite some time, and just recently it has, the control and authority has been restored back to our local government. And so we saw this as an opportunity to make this change now. And so when the bill was first introduced, it was the Guam Behavioral Health Center. And even that title, Mr. Speaker, came from mental health, came from their stakeholders, and it was not, you know, of our, it was not us, you know, just coming out and saying, okay, this is the name, you know, we want. This came from them. And so even with the addition of wellness, this is something that has come up through the public hearing, and so I like to be able to move this forward and, once and for all, make this change. So I ask my colleagues for their support. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Rodriguez. Senator Yamashita, you're recognized. Anybody after Senator Yamashita who wish to speak on the bill? Senator Augen, Speaker Wampat?
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I stand in full support of Bill Number 73-32. Mr. Speaker, as you well know, there is incredible power in language. There is incredible influence and impact of how people react to names, to words. A change in a word can cause a real huge difference in how somebody behaves. For those of us who live in the world of disabilities, this idea of referring to us as a person of health and wellness versus a person of a disability who's disabled, who is not able, just makes a really big difference. It doesn't take away from the fact that we know we have issues to work with, that we do need to get better, that we are different, that we do need to work to be included. It doesn't take that away at all. But what this does do is it makes us feel a little more comfortable about being at the table. Mr. Speaker, this stigma of being a part of the mental health world is huge. That stigma is so significant that sometimes it causes us not to want to reach out, because we don't like to be laughed at, because we don't like to be spoken about, and most certainly we don't like to be talked about without us being there. Those of us in the mental health world appreciate every time somebody stands up for us and says that we are people. We are now seeing on our island that the stigma of mental health is surfacing, the evilness of it is all around us, and we're having huge fallout. The whole 212 incident, for me, is a mental health issue. We should have been able to prevent that. We should have seen that, the school level, the community level, and we should have done something about it, and we didn't. And I suggest that we take these kinds of steps, we will be better able, our community will be better able to help those of us who do need help, and to make it a more inclusive, respectful community. This language gives us a sense of hope. It's positive. It strengthens our confidence. There are about 16,000 of us on our island who have disabilities, and while we believe we see a group, a growing population, whose confidence is growing, they come to the legislature, they're at the stores, they're on the radio shows, they're in the stores, they're holding their heads up, they're talking, they're laughing, they tell the jokes, and it's wonderful. We still have many issues, and we have to resolve them, because that is our work. And so as the author of this legislation said, to some, it might seem like trivial, but to us, this is huge. And I ask our colleagues to understand that. If you don't live in this world, please look into the world and see what we are dealing with. We need every single hint of help, every single opportunity, so that we can live, we can work, and we can help the island be as good as it can be. So I stand in full support of Bill Number 73-32. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much, Dr. Yamashita. Senator Augen.
This is Massey, Mr. Speaker. When I start this, I also would like to stand in support of this particular name change, and the sponsor of the measure had alluded to the fact that this has been an issue that has been discussed for many, many years. And having worked very closely with a number of the personnel not too long ago, three, four years ago, with the personnel at the Department of Mental Health and Substance Abuse, soon to be upon the passage of this legislation, the Guam Behavioral Health and Wellness Center, we all know that their task continues to be a tremendous challenge. And I think it's great that, in fact, the government of Guam now has been rendered the administrative responsibility of facilitating the operations and the services provided by that agency, and those are issues that we're going to have to deal with down the road. But aside from that, there's one particular statement that was mentioned by Dr. James Kiffer, who was part of the federal management team member, or part of the federal management team, that recently concluded, and his reference was that it's more appropriate and carries less of a negative stigma. And that was really the gist of the primary premise behind the idea surfacing about, why don't we change the name? Because ultimately, it may reflect on something a bit more positive. So I certainly stand in support of this measure, changing the name of that particular agency, and I encourage the media sources out there to, once this legislation is passed, to do likewise, so that we can transition and move forward from the former name. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Augen. Madam Speaker, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I fully support this legislation, and people may think, my God, it's so simple because it's just a name change, and we always ask the question, you know, what's in a name? How does the name describe, you know, services, even a person? And I grew up, of course, my name is Judith, and it bothered me for a long time, why I was a Judith, and every single one of my sisters are Evelyn, Marilyn, Jacqueline, Ellen, Rosalyn, oh, Lynn, oh, and Lynn, I thought I was the most awkward one, and why Judith and all that, but, you know, I've eventually come to terms with it and accepted it, so. But it's, can you imagine, though, if there are those who aren't able to make that adjustment? What many times is associated with that would be, you know, shame, that maybe there is something really wrong, and then when you think of mental health and substance abuse, then you would also think the same thing, you'd be ashamed to be able to admit this, much less even go to mental health. I remember when I was going out to the schools because of the increase of suicide among our schoolchildren, and when a recommendation was made for, from the school counselor to mental health, the parents didn't even want to have anything to do with mental health. And it's really so sad, because as a result of that, of course, you can guess what had happened, because we're so ashamed of it, we don't want to be there, and, you know, it's an illness. It's an illness like any other illness. It's unfortunate that we give it a really bad label to it, but despair, hopelessness, bipolar, you know, are all illnesses, like other illnesses, and it should be treated as such. And I think that the fact, when you remember this, and especially with, when we think of children who have a disability, because that's when it starts, of course, when we start making reference to that, is that the one thing that a lot of people even fail to realize is that they think that the behavior is a result even of, you know, of other external factors, when the behavior normally, I mean, what happens, rather, is that it is expressed through their behavior. And that's why the change will be well received, because when there's a change in a name, attitudes already start to change. When there's even sometimes a change of client's attitude, start to change. And I think what is good, and I mean, I know that's not what the name is about, but I think what really would help when we start to talk about this is really, you know, the idea that, and I'm glad they put it, of course, is that it is now the Department of Guam Behavioral Health and Wellness Center, because that's exactly what it really is. It's based on behavior, and more importantly, is we want to be able to be well. It's a start in our community already, when we have this wellness center that actually deals with our other health, our physical health, not our mental health. So we're hearing that a lot in the community. It definitely does not have a bad connotation. So I think the mere fact that this is going to be a Guam Behavioral Health and Wellness Center actually gives it a really nice sound to it, and that actually when people look to it is that, I want to get well. And I think we're going to start to see a change in our attitudes about this simple change in terms of the title of the Department of Agency. So I rise in full support, and I think that this really is, I may be wrong, but I don't think there's a single individual in this legislature who would not support this piece of legislation, I think. You know, of course, the authors, you know, for moving forward, however way in which you're able to come to the decision to do this, I think it's a great thing, and congratulations to you all.
Thank you very much. Any other senator wish to be heard? Senator Ben Pangolino?
And how that has inhibited, and may have even discouraged, those individuals in our community that could benefit from behavioral services intervention, behavioral science intervention, into improving their lives and their ability to cope with the pressures of our ever fast-paced society. And I believe that it has had an effect, that when you talk to some people, because of the stereotype associated with what happens in these mental health facilities, mental health hospitals, you know, for many of us, the most vivid memories of, or not memories, but the most vivid stereotype we have may have been contained in the movie One Flew Over the Cuckoo's Nest, where you saw the way that patients were treated within these mental health facilities. And that was a very graphic, very heart-wrenching, very true condition of how people were treated at that time, and the movement and the improvement in understanding the medical aspect of the disconnects that occur for individuals with mental health problems between the ability to process the information that allows them to integrate themselves into our society, like other individuals who are able to handle those processes in terms of the pressures, is very different. But we've made tremendous improvements in that respect, and I think that this change reflects those improvements in this name. I wish we'd just maybe added the word behavioral sciences, and, you know, the Guam Behavioral Sciences and Wellness Center, but I won't touch it, since this was really the result of stakeholders. But I think sciences, in my own opinion, would add even greater clarity to the type of treatment individuals are able to receive there, that it's based on science, that it is based on improvements and research that has allowed the treatment of individuals so that we can, so that they're able to not only receive the treatment from the scientific perspective of the creation of new drugs and that help, as well as behavior modification tactics and practices that are able to help them cope without maybe the need for the intervention of drugs, but drugs and science is available and part of the treatment process that makes life better for these individuals faced with mental health issues. So again, Mr. Speaker, I stand in full support. I think the improvements and the progress that have been made in the treatment of individuals with mental health issues have gone way beyond what has been the stereotypes that we still kind of reach back into in terms of our minds as we kind of reach back into in terms of our minds as we work with our own families who have mental health issues and can benefit from mental health intervention treatment that will allow them to work better with members, other members of our society. And we hope that with this new name change, with, you know, highlight the advances that have been made and the improvements in the treatment and the services that are available at this, that are available, that Guam Behavioral Health and Wellness Center, and that our society will become healthier, even with just this name change, because it then removes, I think, any additional barriers that may still exist out there with regards to the stereotype of what happens in mental health facilities and the type of services and professionalism that exists there, which could help them and benefit them in terms of dealing with the pressures of our society. Thank you. And Sidus Massey, I want to congratulate the author. As one of the speakers said, this was, been discussed in many, many years, and I think the author has taken all of those discussions in the past, put the time and the effort in integrating and getting our community to work together to support it, and then presenting it to this body, so that deserves kudos, Mr. Speaker, for the effort and the work done. Thank you, and Sidus Massey.
Thank you very much, Speaker Ben. Any other senator wish to be heard? If not, I'll invite the, I'll invite the sponsor to close.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I want to thank our colleagues for their positive, their positive statements to this legislation. And before I forget, I want to ensure for the record, Mr. Speaker, that when we substituted the bill, one of the main sponsors' names was left out, and I want to ensure that Senator Mike Lintiako is included as one of the main sponsors. And also, there's no objections. I'd like to add Senator Uggan, Speaker Wampat, Senator Panglinen, and Senator Barnes as the other co-sponsors of this legislation. Thank you. And so, again, Mr. Speaker, this legislation is really in honor of our brothers and sisters, our families, who take on the services of mental health and who feel that with something as simple as the name of the facility that they're going into for treatment has a lot to do with how they're viewed in our community and how they're looked at. This is really for them, because now we're ensuring that we let them know that, you know, we're all equal, they're just like one of us, and that this small step in changing the name would, you know, would achieve that. So again, thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
On the motion to send the bill down to third reading, filed, and there being no Senator Siniklisa recognized on Bill 88.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Concerning Bill Number 88-32, I would first like to make a motion that Bill 88-32 be substituted by the Committee on Aviation, Ground Transportation, Regulatory Concerns, and Future Generations, and further substituted on the floor, be accepted by this body.
Okay. Does everybody have a copy of that? All right. There being no objection.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I would also like to make a motion to move Bill Number 88-32 to the third reading file and be afforded an opportunity to speak on the bill.
Any objection?
No.
Mr. Speaker, Bill 88-32 was introduced to address a current problem in policy that we have that's affecting the functions of this government. In 1973, 1974, Imina Dosip Naleswetur in Guam enacted into current law a ratio of alcohol establishments that are allowed in every municipality throughout the island. That ratio is 200 alcohol establishments, I'm sorry, one alcohol establishment for every 200 inhabitants within that respective municipality. Imina Dosip did so with the wisdom of knowing that limiting the number of alcohol establishments per municipality is a good thing to do for the community at the time in order to prevent alcohol establishments from overwhelming the livelihoods of the people within those municipalities. Today, we're faced with a situation that is very different from the time of Imina Dosip. In 1973 and 1974, we did not have the service-oriented economy that we do today. And this service-oriented economy is catering to millions of tourists visiting our island, it's catering to many military personnel visiting our island as well. And this service economy needs our support. Today, we need to consistently support our service economy in order to continue to provide opportunities for our people. However, we must not neglect the wisdom of Imina Dosip to protect the community. And so, Bill 88-32 is a concerted effort to strike that appropriate balance, given today's circumstances. And so, what Bill 88-32 does is it seeks to no longer limit the number of alcohol establishments in municipalities. However, in order to mitigate the community impact that this bill will have, it also seeks to increase the charges that are assessed to these alcohol establishments, so that we can provide revenue directly to the necessary government services to mitigate any potential negative impacts that these particular establishments may have. However, we also need to be mindful of the fact that whenever it comes to increasing costs to our businesses, we mustn't do it in a way that's going to limit the opportunities of businesses to open up. We don't want to adversely impact those businesses in a way that's going to hurt our economy, because the whole intent of lifting the limitation on municipalities is to allow the economy to continue to grow. And so, we've gone back and forth on this bill, and the final version that we've brought to the floor is a version that is revenue neutral to the general fund, which is very important. We don't want to adversely impact the general fund by moving money out of there that's originally intended under the current law. However, it's also intended to increase the fees to these businesses in a manner that we believe is gradual and spread out over a period of time that existing businesses will be able to absorb. And so, the fee is scheduled to increase by $200 per alcohol license every two years, beginning in fiscal year 2015, I'm sorry, calendar year 2015, and every two years thereafter to conclude in the year 2023. And over the course of that period of time, the alcohol license fee will rise by $200 every two years, starting two years from now, up until a total amount of $2,000 in 2023. Now, we believe that a $200 increase two years from now is manageable for the existing establishments. I believe that it's more than enough time for existing establishments to get their pricing adjusted or adjust their cost of operations in a manner that's going to allow them to absorb a $200 increase over a two-year period. Every other increase thereafter is again going to take another two years. So it's a very, very gradual increase that takes into consideration the need for us to allow businesses to be able to adjust their operations in a way that's going to be able to absorb this additional charge. This additional $200 that starts two years from now and continues every two years thereafter until 2023 is going to be earmarked to three key areas in order to mitigate the community impact of these establishments. And those three key areas are, first, our Guam Police Department, which is going to be getting 40% of the fee increases. The second is going to be the Regulatory Division of the Department of Revenue and Taxation that oversees the regulation of these alcohol establishments, as well as many other establishments in many other industries. The third is going to be going to our mayors, who are the front lines in terms of addressing various community impacts from various sources, and we want to make sure that we're giving them a portion of these fee increases in order to mitigate the impact of these establishments. In 2015, we target this particular year, Mr. Speaker, taking into consideration also the impacts that the government of Guam is going to be facing financially. In 2015, due to debt that this government has taken on, we're going to see our debt service jump by $15 million. And that debt service is going to be coming out more or less from the general fund. We want to make sure that as the resources become scarcer in the general fund, we're not shortchanging the key community mitigation portions that are necessary in order to protect the community as envisioned by the wisdom of Imina Dosip. So in 2015, this fee will go up by $200, and it's going to direct that $200 per establishment into GPD, the Regulatory Division of Revantax, and the mayors. And in 2015, based on the existing number of establishments, we're projecting that this will bring in an additional $50,000 to GPD, an additional $37,000 to the Regulatory Division of Revantax, and an additional $37,000 to the mayors. The money that this will be used for, particularly for GPD, will be to maintain and provide for the patrol fleet that's necessary to keep our streets safe. So, Mr. Speaker, I'm asking my colleagues and this body to view this bill as a balanced approach to considering the wisdom of Imina Dosip and protecting our community while also securing a revenue source for those elements that are necessary to protect that community in a manner that's not going to adversely impact our businesses. This bill is being proffered to the body, and I seek everybody's wisdom and input on it, because something as delicate as this that requires balance is something that I want to make sure we get everybody's input on, so that every angle is looked at and every element is accounted for. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
I saw the hands of Senator Yamashita, Senator McCready, and Senator Lintiako go up. Any other senator wish to be heard? Senator Uggan and Senator Panglinen. The chair is going to take just a real short recess. Senator Panglinen has just made me aware of the fact that Revantax just submitted testimony, and they scanned it to me, but unfortunately, it's reading upside down on my computer. So if, if one of the clerks can have it printed, so that those of you who haven't seen it can at least see their comments before any of you make your comments. So we'll take a short recess, just to read their, Revantax comment, and then if that's going to change anybody's testimony, then we'll proceed. Would, can we have somebody run copies for all the members? Yeah. All right. Thank you. So we'll take a short recess. Confession, please. Senator Yamashita recognized on the motion.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I was at this public hearing, and I listened intently. I understand the issue, and I appreciate the effort to correct some issues, or to bring to the 21st some issues that have changed or evolved throughout our community. But my concern right now, and the mover of this bill said that he appreciated all of us to speak so we can have balance, and that he wanted to make sure that this was the right way to address this. And I, this is what I asked, Mr. Speaker. First, the public hearing was held on April 19th, and I believe that we're supposed to have at least 10 days for public input, and I do not believe we had the 10 days. And I probably should have opposed the motion to put it on the third reading file at the time, and I wasn't thinking fast enough. But I do raise that as a point of concern. I also, when I was at the public hearing, the first measure was to allow Tumuning, Tumon, and Harmon to lift up the limit. And I understood that concern, you know, that's where a lot of our tourists go, that's where a lot of activity happens. And when I heard, well, maybe across the whole island, I thought, well, that makes sense, because we really want to welcome our tourists across the whole island. There's a lot to be seen in the central part of our island and the southern part of our island, and most people really would gain a lot, enjoy the southern parts of our island perhaps even more than what they find in Tumon. And so, I don't have an issue with that, but what I do have a real concern with is if indeed we're now striking and changing the whole limit, or the issuance of licenses and the whole authorized racial segment, we're simply deleting that. I think what we do need to do is hear from the mayors of these villages. As we talk about the mayors being in the front line and being given, and they will benefit from this, and that's always a good thing, because I agree that they are in the front line, and they are the ones working with our families and our community. They know what's going on and who's doing it, because they know their communities, they know their villages. But I think it would be wise to invite them, to come in, to ask them, what do you think about this? I recall, maybe a month ago, maybe longer, maybe shorter, one of our southern villages did not, rose up and said they didn't want development in their village. They wanted to ensure that it was maintained as the way it is. And so, I think, as we've been talking today about respect, about inclusion, about hearing the voices and the opinions and the thoughts as we render these policies, I put this question forward. Should we have another public hearing where this has really changed? Perhaps not the licensing monies, and, you know, we're going to increase those fees, and I don't think anyone really has a problem with that. But to say that the whole island now can, that there is no limit, that is a change, that's a significant change, and there are some villages who might not want that. And even if the measure prevails, in the very least, we respected them enough to bring them to the table to listen to those concerns. Now, perhaps, all the mayors were called, and I don't know that. Maybe that conversation did happen, and I just don't know about that. Maybe that conversation did happen, and I just don't know about that. But I do raise the notion of stakeholder leadership. We have been touting over and over again how we are inclusive and how we do respect people's opinions. And so I ask if that measure has been met with Bill 88-32. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Yamashita. Senator McCready?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. After reading the bill, I would like to proffer a few amendments. I did speak to the author about it, and he didn't have any objections at the time. I spoke to him about one amendment. I would also like to proffer an amendment to... My first amendment would be on page one, on line one and two on page seven. And where it states that 40% to the Police Service Fund for the procurement and services of patrol vehicles, I would like to eliminate the procurement and service of patrol vehicles. In its place, I would like to add 40% to the Police Service Fund for the maintenance, parts, repair, and regular engine service for existing patrol vehicles.
Does everybody get that amendment? And can I get someone to bring me another version of 88? I still show 20% for police, so I must have a... Are we going to take a short break? I guess we're taking a short break.
So the language in Bill 88, line one and two of page seven will read, "40% to the Police Services Fund for the maintenance and services of marked patrol vehicles." Maintenance services of marked patrol vehicles.
Everybody get that amendment?
Maintenance services for marked patrol vehicles. That should cover the scope of work that needs to be done when it comes to repairs. Maintenance services and repair of marked patrol vehicles.
We're taking a break.
So it should read, "Maintenance and service, maintenance services and repairs for marked patrolled vehicles." And that is my amendment.
On the amendment, any senator wish to be heard on it? Senator... No objection? Did you have a second one, Senator McCready? Thank you. Senator Luntiaako?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I think I might have made the same error that my other colleague had made in not objecting to move it to the third reading file only because we share the same concerns that I'm not sure that we've given the public an adequate opportunity to comment on the bill as amended and substituted on the floor. And we go back to the original bill as introduced, which specifically allowed for the unlimited issuances of liquor licenses in certain municipalities. And with the strike, the entire 3309 section, it basically opens it up to the entire island. So we need to ask ourselves the question of whether or not those that may be affected by the bill as substituted on the floor really have had the opportunity to comment on the changes to the bill. Whereas when the public hearing was announced with the introduction of the bill, it really only applied to certain municipalities as far as how many liquor licenses may be issued in their respective municipality. So have we really given our public the opportunity to comment on it? And therefore, I ask to reconsider whether this should even be voted on. We really should allow the public. I don't see any harm in allowing for comment. There may not be any comment. But I think as senators, we owe it to our constituents to hear their concerns at a very minimum. I don't see a rush as to why it needs to be voted on within this session. So I would respectfully ask the author to consider that, as well as my other colleagues. Otherwise, I couldn't support it as substituted on the floor for that mere reason that we haven't given the public an opportunity to comment on it as it affects them. So thank you for the opportunity to speak, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Luntiaako. Speaker Panglinen. He's said he doesn't.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Speaker, I do want to say, of course, that since the very beginning, I'd expressed some reservations on the bill. But I do want to commend the author as he continues to work at integrating the public comment and the comments from government officials with regards to the iterations that have come out of the dialogue that has occurred. I'll leave it to the others on whether or not enough dialogue has occurred. And I think everyone's voiced that concern and probably shares some of that concern. But I do want to say that I think the author has continually, whenever he's received those public comments and those concerns, we can see it in terms of where we're at from where we started, that those concerns have not fallen on deaf ears. I go back to then just my position on the bill and some of the provisions of the bill. You know, we started this with, of course, recognizing, as the author has, on the wisdom of the 12th Guam Legislature in kind of setting policy for what kind of establishments we want to have in our village and whether or not limits on those type of establishments affect the quality of life, the health and safety of the residents in each of those villages. While really with some great foresight, as I look at what has occurred with regards to those limitations that have been played, great foresight and corrected that by the 12 members of the 12 Guam Legislature with regards to trying to confine some of those activities that may not be wholesome family activities to areas where commerce will develop and has developed. And we saw that as those areas develop more, that they have in fact exceeded the limitations because maybe the population didn't occur, the residential population did occur. And maybe it didn't occur there because there's too many bars, and families don't want to raise their children next to bars or, you know, dance halls or whatever has with regards to alcohol and its influence on community life. And we saw then that said, okay, we don't want those out in our communities and so forth. And I kind of like his approach initially with regards to raising the limits and things like that for those areas in which we already may have been developed so far that we can't reverse the trend. But I think that with the proposal here to erase those limits across the community, we still have those communities where we haven't reached those limits, and we don't need to reverse any kind of trend because of the limitations we've put on there. And I think that I would like to, if at all possible, find a way to continue that approach that the Guam Legislature in the 12th iteration of it have placed in public policy. Because as I look and study it a little bit more, I do find, as the author has found, that it has worked in some places, but there's a few pockets of commercial activity in which we may need to take a look at and reevaluate those issues. So that really is my dilemma in the bill itself, is those issues that I have just raised. But I do want to say and recognize that the author has responded to public input. Whether or not there's been enough time or everybody's had the ability to do so, those that have concerns have come to individual members of this body, and I'm sure if they had brought them to the author's attention, perhaps those would have gotten addressed before the bill got on the floor. But nonetheless, many of us are in receipt of additional concerns by the public, and we are all individually responding in a manner that we wish to respond to those concerns, and they're all legitimate and so forth. But I do want to say that I think wherever the author has felt and received that information, I think the bill, as we have seen from where it started to where it's at today, has attempted to integrate those concerns and resolve those issues the best way that the author has seen fit to do so for presentation to this body for our consideration. So thank you very much, Mr. Dusmasi.
Thank you very much, Speaker Ben. Any other senator wish to be heard on the bill? Senator Rodriguez? Any other senators? Senator Rodriguez recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I have a question for the author, if he would yield. On page seven, you, we say here, 40% to the Police Reserve Fund, 30% to the Municipal Planning Council, and then 30% to the Regulatory Enforcement Fund. I want to find out if that is actually a fund that's established. I know this is new language because I know that in public law, 31-199, we've established the Alcoholic Beverage Compliance Fees and Fines Fund. And what that fund does, Mr. Speaker, is... I'll read it to you here. It says, "The administrator with board approval shall be authorized to use the monies collected for programs to promote compliance with liquor laws, business development, and improvement of inter-agency and inter-office functions. Such programs may include, but are not limited to enforcement, public service announcement promoting responsible drinking and driving practices, youth programs, education, and alcoholic beverage control board in administrative meetings." And so I just want to make sure that, I don't know if his intent was to create a new fund, if that's an existing fund. If not, I would like to make the amendment to reflect this fund, the Alcoholic Beverage Compliance Fees and Fines Fund.
Thank you. Senator Sinicalis, do you yield to the question?
I do, Mr. Speaker, and I appreciate the question. That fund that is specifically earmarked for the alcoholic licenses does exist. However, what I'm finding as oversight chairman of Revantax is that we actually have a need for resources across the board in all of the regulatory elements of the agency, not just regarding the alcohol establishments, but in insurance and banking, in the property enforcement areas as well. And so I would like for the funding to be earmarked in a manner that will allow for the flexibility of the agency to meet whatever regulatory needs are out there, not just those limited to the alcohol establishments. The amounts that this will ultimately result in in the year 2023, assuming there's no growth in alcohol establishments, is $189,000 per fiscal year. And for one regulatory operation of Revantax, I believe that that would be an over-concentration of resources when there are a lot of other regulatory areas within the agency that would be able to utilize those funds as the need becomes necessary. Again, in 2015, the amount that is anticipated to be generated from this is $37,800 in 2015, when $15 million of additional debt service is going to be due from the general fund. So I would like for the regulatory aspects of the entire agency to be able to avail themselves of these resources, depending on where the needs are. However, if this is an item that is contingent upon the support of the good senator regarding his amendment, I'm very open to considering it. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Does that address your question, Senator Rodriguez? And do you wish to move forward with your proposed amendment?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, and thank you to the author. I think I understand him. I do understand him. And I don't think I agree that, you know, that in this legislation and what we're doing here that deals with alcoholic beverages, that fines for the resources that are coming in from alcohol-related services go in to fund other regulatory functions of the department, knowing full well that the ABC Board now has a very hard time of enforcement. And one of the difficulties is that there's always no resources available, no financial resources available. And so in order to perhaps bolster the enforcement of alcohol-related... And so in order to perhaps bolster the enforcement of alcohol-related functions, I'd like to, well, you know, I, can we, I want to ask for a short recess, please.
The legislature will take a short recess. Senator Rodriguez, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I want to move to make an amendment on page seven, line five, to replace the Regulatory Enforcement Fund to the Alcoholic Beverage Compliance Fees and Fines Fund.
On the amendment to, on page seven, line five, to change Regulatory Enforcement Fund to Alcoholic Beverage, et cetera, fund. Senator Rodriguez, if you would, again.
Okay. It is the Alcoholic Beverage Compliance Fees and Fines Fund.
And Fines Fund.
Fines, yes.
Anybody wish to be heard on the Rodriguez amendment? Any senator wish to be heard on the Rodriguez amendment? Any senator wish to be heard on the main motion on the bill? Any senator wish to be heard on the main motion on the bill? If not, I'll invite this author to close.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I appreciate the commentary from all of my fellow colleagues and their contributions to trying to resolve this problem. It's not an easy question. These are the kind of things that, when we have to address them, they're very, very difficult for us to do, because it's going to be affecting people who have interests in the community, whether it's a business and the fees that are going up that affect them, or whether it's a community concern about the ratio being lifted. And I just wanted to address, Mr. Speaker, and I hope that everybody is, I want this to be very, very clear, that the limitations, the effect of the ratio right now is only affecting two main municipalities, Temuning and Hagatna, which are way over the ratio already. Temuning is over by forty-one, and Hagatna is over by nine. And so this law, as it currently stands, is already way over what the law stipulates. Now, I've had meetings of REVEN Tax and with the ABC Board in particular, and I asked them questions about this ratio, and I said, why are we over this limit? And that's one of the reasons why earlier we introduced the bill regarding the education of boards and commissions to make sure that they're aware of the law. But absent that, once a license is issued, we enter a whole new realm of problems if we're going to go out and revoke these licenses, especially because the aging of these licenses and the tracking of those ages is a problem within the agency. And so the existing law needs to change in order for us to resolve this policy problem. And I wanted to touch on the other villages, because a concern was raised about whether or not we asked them. And just to clarify that, with the exception of Hagatna and Temuning, every other village is way under the ratio. The ratio in Dedido right now is 225, and we only have 55 establishments. The ratio in Baragada is 45, and we only have 19. The ratio in Talaforfu is 16, and we only have seven. So lifting this ratio won't adversely impact villages. It's not like they're all teetering on the edge of violating the ratio, and if we lift it, then everything's going to get so impacted. They're way under already, so these establishments can already open in these villages. But the reason, Mr. Speaker, that we're wanting to lift the ratio completely at this point in time is because it's already materialized as a problem today in Temuning and Hagatna. And as a lawmaker, I want to address problems in a manner that's going to have an impact and resolve the problem over the long term. So if we just target the ratio for Temuning and Hagatna, are we going to have to come back to the same question next term, or the term after, or the term after that? I don't know, and I don't want a legislature ten, ten terms from now to be facing this exact same questions about ratios when we could have addressed it today. And so that's why the language is being repealed, because it's presenting itself as a problem in current villages, and I don't want it to present itself as a problem in future villages. And I want to make sure that this kind of a problem that is presented before our community is one that we're able to address now for the long term. Again, the only villages that are over the ratio is Temuning and Hagatna, with all other villages way below it. But it's presented as a solution in this bill to be a long-term resolution to something that's already cropped up as a problem in two particular villages. I appreciate the commentary of all the senators, and I wanted to also talk about the question regarding whether or not there was enough time for the public to comment. And I very much, I'm deeply appreciative to the comments made earlier by Speaker Ben. My committee listens. We always listen, Mr. Speaker. And in the nine days, it hasn't been ten days since the last bill, it's been nine, but in the nine days, the only testimony that we received was that from REVEN Tax. No one has called my office, Mr. Speaker. Perhaps phone calls have been made to many other senators, but no one's called us. No messages have been left, no testimony has been submitted. It's been nine days. So I would like the body to be aware of that, and I would like the body to, again, view this from the challenge that it presents itself as. And that's a challenge of finding a balanced solution to an existing policy problem where ratios are already being exceeded in the municipality of Temuning, already being exceeded in the municipality of Hagatna. And help me to resolve this policy problem in a manner that's going to be sustainable, in a manner that's going to mitigate the community impact, in a manner that's going to make sure that it's happening in a way that's not going to adversely impact our businesses. It's not an easy problem to solve, and I'm asking my colleagues to please help me, at least in this first step of resolving this existing policy problem. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much. Senator Rodriguez?
Sorry, Mr. Speaker. I just wanted to ask that when I made the amendments on page seven, that maybe the clerk be, I mean, I'm sorry, the legal counsel be allowed to make the other technical changes and strike out where Regulatory Enforcement Fund is mentioned.
All right. Legal counsel acknowledges that and is instructed.
Thank you.
All right. I'm just going to take a real quick recess.[1242.99] There, on the motion to place Bill eighty-eight, Senator McCready.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I object on the motion to send the bill to the voting file.
There's been an objection. All those in favor of sending the bill to the voting file, please raise your hand. Seven, oh, wait, three, four, five. On, to-
Put it to the voting file.
To put it to the voting file.
Okay.
There's been an objection, so we need eight votes to-
We need eight votes to bring it down.
To bring it down. I already see two hands down, so there's not eight. Well, there's only five of us. All right. Fails. All right. Senator, as majority leader, do you have a motion to return to motions?
Do I have to make it?
Or would you like to make it yourself, Senator Aron? You can make it yourself. Make it yourself.
Mr. Speaker, I'd like to move with the consideration of the body to reconsider the action of the body on Bill Number Seventy-Six, that's thirty-two C O R, with all the appropriate amendments in the voting file, and bring it back to second reading for one particular amendment, please, Mr. Speaker.
So, the motion notwithstanding the action of the body to revert back to place Bill fifty-
Seventy-six.
Seventy-six in the second reading file for the purpose of an amendment. Any objection?
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker, and to our colleagues, thank you very much for the opportunity to just hopefully briefly revisit this legislation. I have discussed with a number of our colleagues about the deletion of- about the deletion of one particular phrase. On page two, I believe copies have been circulated to the respective senators' desks. I'd like to move that on Bill number seventy-six, that's thirty-two COR, on page two, that line one that reads, "This subsection A shall be effective for a term not to exceed one hundred and eighty days from date of enactment," that that particular phrase be deleted. That's my motion. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Did everybody get that amendment? The amendment's not up here at the clerk's desk. The one hundred and eighty days. Has everybody seen the, uh? The motion is to delete the one hundred and eighty day. Does every, anybody wish to be, any senator wished to be heard on the amendment? Any senator wished to be heard on the amendment? You're recognized, Senator Adda.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I recall that when we, during the public hearing, there was a discussion on this, when the Attorney General can step in to perform in the absence of this quorum. And I'm just wondering if, if, let's say, after the enactment of this act, that the governor appointments are not made, so one could possibly argue that whether you got zero, or only one, or only two, you do not have a quorum. And so, therefore, the Attorney General can step in until we have three on the commission. And I'm just maybe, I don't know, maybe legal counsel can enlighten me on this as to-
We'll take a short recess.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. The author of the bill, I believe, has answered my question, and I'm satisfied with his response. Thank you.
All right, on the amendment, any senator wished to be heard on the amendment? All right, you're welcome to close, Senator Ogun.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker, and I want to thank our colleagues, and most especially, I think I may not have moved for the placement of this particular bill, seventy-six, that's thirty-two, onto the voting file, so I'd like to make that motion at this time also, Mr. Speaker. Thank you.
On the motion. Okay, on the motion to send, return the bill back to the voting file. No objection? Senator Snikola, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Notwithstanding the House rules, I'd like to make a motion to place, to maintain Bill eighty-eight in the second reading file. Okay, I'd like to make a motion to go back to motions.
To motions. Notwithstanding the House rules, on the motion to go back to motions, there being an objection. Your motion, Senator.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I'd like to make a motion to maintain Bill eighty-eight on the second reading file.
Notwithstanding the House rules.
Notwithstanding the House rules.
Any objection? Is that, is that an objection, Senator?
Not an objection. Just a point of inquiry, with all amendments intact. Or are we reverting back to the original version that was reported out by the committee?
He's gonna have to make whichever motion he wants.
A motion to maintain it in the second reading file with all amendments intact.
Thank you, thank you.
Notwithstanding the House rules.
Is there an objection to that? Okay. Madam Speaker? You're recognized on Bill fifty-seven.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. What I'd like to do again is then to withdraw the other version.
Let's take the discussion outside, please.
Gentlemen, thank you very much. The motion is to withdraw the bill that we were currently discussing, and to replace it then with what everyone has, a new copy that says, "As further substituted by the author on the floor."
On the motion to accept Bill fifty-seven thirty-two, "As further substituted by the author on the floor," is there an objection?
Okay. Thank you very much again, Mr. Speaker. Real quickly, all of the language that was originally in the other bill has now been organized for everybody to read all the way through, and it actually takes into consideration that we've gone back to the Territorial Highway Fund, but within that fund, there would be a Public Rights of Way account, which is also brought up by the second co-sponsor, and I think that way we'll be able to then delineate exactly what those funds are. The other, and as discussed again before the bill went back, is that to include in Section Three, any peace officer, which is by law, or employee authorized in writing by the Director of the Department of Public Works, to be able to include them now to be able to do this. And then the last in Section Four is the new then paragraph, and a new fee, a violation of that fee, which will be payable to the Public Rights of Way account of the Territorial Highway Fund, which separates this totally from the Registration Abandon Fund fee, or abandoned vehicle fee. And this here is that the violation is only for a hundred dollars for thirty days. There's no second or third offense, and it's still there. Again, they'll be fined another hundred dollars in the next thirty days again. So, that's what Bill fifty-seven thirty-two, and this time, I really hope that everybody now will support it. Thank you very much.
On the motion on Bill fifty-seven, any senator wished to be heard? On the bill as further substituted by the author on the floor. Any senator wished to be heard? All right. On the motion to send it down to the voting file. Do we have anything else on the-
Legislature is back in session. The Assistant Majority Leader, you're recognized.
Madam Speaker, I move that we recess until 3:00 p.m. on Monday.
Okay. Thank you very much. We are recessed until Monday at 3:00 p.m., April, what? Twenty-ninth, awaiting, of course, the filing of the committee report for Bill twenty, which we would take up that afternoon.